Okay.
Great, thank you. Good evening. We are returning from executive session and reopening the meeting. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, please notify me by raising the hand icon on your screen, and I will notify the public for the Massachusetts Public Meeting laws. Do we have anyone who is making recording today? May I check my seat? And Kelly, thank you very much, Kelly. From the enterprise. Public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to the open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12.ma.us. Do we have any public comments on items not on the agenda? If so, please raise your hand icon. Becky Charles. Yes, we can.
I just wanted to really thank all the teachers, the school staff, the school nurses, the custodians, and all the administrators in Falmouth for keeping our kids safe for this last year and a half. I know it's been really tough. I wanted to make sure that they know that they're valued and that we really appreciate them and all the work they've done to keep everyone safe. And that I just, I hope that they are given the opportunity to continue doing so and that their voices are heard tonight.
Great, thank you very much, Becky. We appreciate that. Any other public comment? That's Becky. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move to the first item on our agenda, which is to act on FY23 school budget. Oh, sorry, I apologize, Cindy. Okay, I think, I apologize, Cindy. So if you want to raise your hand again, we'll take you. But you have her, okay? Hi, Cindy.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Tonight, I'd like to address the impact of workload in regards to the Falmouth Education Association and its members. Recently, the Falmouth Education Association has been trying to negotiate a fair contract with the school committee and district administration reflecting both the astronomical cost of living increase and the high salary increase given to the superintendent. If the teachers are only being offered 1.5%, but the superintendent is getting 4%, why is this happening? Additionally, with an understanding of the town police, fire, and DPW workers all negotiating fear contracts, why is this not happening to your teachers? Who have been 100% face-to-face in person for the last two school years? Why have the parents and the staff, both meaningful stakeholders, been left out of S R three conversations with over $3 million being allocated to Falmouth? Last week, an article was published by the local paper saying over $2.2 million in Chapter 70 funds was also expected to be given to the district. Why is this extra funding also not being discussed with parents and staff? Our teachers and staff need to be given a fair contract that reflects not only the amount of work they have done over the last two years, but also that they are valued, respected, and a vital part of our local community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Amy Leonardi. Hi, Amy.
Hi, everyone. Hi, thank you for giving me a chance to speak. I just actually, I wanted to bring up something. It is a question I have put to both administration and the school committee prior, and I have yet to get an answer, so I'm hoping I can speak it one more time in public comment in hopes that you will do some research into this and get us back an answer. As a parent, it has come to our attention, many parents in this, that in grades five through 12, there is an exorbitant amount of time being spent on screens. At Morse Pond in particular, the majority of their day is being spent on the Chromebooks. I am asking the school committee and administration to give us an update. How many minutes a day are they spending on the Chromebooks learning? And how much of that time versus hands-on learning not on a screen? Because I think the public would like that information for all of us to know. That's it.
Great, thank you very much, Amy.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the first item on our agenda, which is to act on FY23 school budget in the amount of $52,950,000. Is there a motion? Kelly makes the motion. Is there a second? Second, Bill Ryder, seconds. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick comment to thank Patrick and Laurie and the whole team for putting together another really well-done budget and managing the process with the town.
Yes, second that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. We're all together, so you don't necessarily have to do a roll call on this. Seeing none, all in favor of approving the FY23 school budget in the amount of $52,950,000, please say aye. Aye. Posed. It's unanimous. Thank you so much, Patrick.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, next up on our agenda is to discuss and act on the mask mandate. Before I begin, I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of the parents, families, and staff members who have emailed the school committee. I think as of 5:45 this evening, we had 128 emails. And so, just so the public knows, when you email the school committee, we each get a copy, and we read them all, and we truly appreciate your thoughts and perspectives. As you know, Governor Baker and Education Commissioner Riley lifted the statewide K through 12 mask mandate effective February 28th. The decision as to whether or not to continue or the mandate has now been left to local school districts. So we are joined this evening by Scott McGann, the town's health agent, and Dr. Greg Parkinson, the district's physician, who will provide current data related to COVID in our communities. So that the public knows, following the presentation, the school committee and superintendent will discuss this matter. And at the conclusion of our deliberation and prior to our vote, I will briefly reopen public comments. Please be aware, the public comment will be reserved for anyone who has not already emailed the school committee. This will give anyone who has not emailed us the chance to be heard. And as always, public comment is limited to two minutes. So I would like to turn it over to Scott and Greg.
You want me to go first?
Yes, please.
Can I share a screen just to give you an update like I had been in the past?
Yes.
Hello, everybody. So here we are. I hope everybody can see my screen. This is our weekly case trend. And going from left to right is, as time progressed over the last couple of years of the pandemic, you can see that this Omicron, and this is only PCR test, so the actual case count was some number higher than that because the self-test kind of came in roughly around the same time. And we had a boatload of cases that came in really fast and it seemed to just tail off as fast as it came. The case count since Thursday afternoon, these case counts is on Thursday afternoon, the Thursday afternoon, prior to the FCTV thing I do every week on Friday, is 17. So you can see the trend continues downward. There's definitely an ebb and flow to COVID. No doubt about it. And so that's where we are right now with cases. Okay. Barnstable County, very similar. So the entire county's had the same crest and waves and peaks and valleys that we've had. And they're down with a three-day total, you know, of course, Falmouth is, you know, 10% of the population, 11% of the population. So, you know, obviously it makes sense that we reflect the same. Incidents, these charts, I just want you to look. The state gives us the two full weeks prior to posting these on Thursday afternoon. So this data is January 23rd to February 5th. So to me, it's a little dated, but that's how the state gives it to us. Falmouth was in the middle of the road with an incidence rate. An incidence rate means how many cases Falmouth would average in a day if there was a population of 100,000. So they adjust the population so that all towns are looked at equally. We're at 42.4, and our positivity at that timeframe was 8.81. Today, the state's positivity rate is 3.09. So it's definitely, you'd say Falmouth's a lot higher. Going back to the original chart, I'm going to circle with my cursor the positivity and the incidents of these two weeks. So what I'm saying is that the positivity incidence is dropping because next Thursday it'll be here. So it'll grab the two weeks that we've had under between 50 and 100, and then the previous week, let's say we continue on with a nice little roll here, will be lower. So we're trending towards where the state is. I think just these two charts are a little dated, but that's how the state gives us. So all, you know, good news in terms of where we were with Omicron as quick as it came out. Hospitalizations were down in that sort of five or six. We still have unvaccinated people. By and large, unvaccinated people will be those that will, you know, end up hospitalized. The case counts are definite, I mean, the hospitalizations are definitely down. Roughly, it looks like half of it was less than, you know, roughly half that it was even, you know, several weeks ago. So again, the trends, the cases and the trends are all in good condition right now. Obviously, there's an ebb and flow. There's no guarantee of the future. I, you know, I wouldn't venture to tell you what's going to happen in a month or six weeks. Or the only thing I could tell you is it's definitely less prevalent in the summer, more prevalent during the winter, but all respiratory viruses, flus, coughs, colds, and stuff like that tend to be that way. And this is not any different from that in terms of how it spreads. It spreads person to person that way. One of the things I do want you to focus on is this chart here. This comes out every Thursday in state. So this chart tells us that there's been 434,394 breakthrough cases, which is 8.3% of all vaccinated people in the state. Of those, 6,790 or 1.56% of those 434,000 have actually been hospitalized. And that's a general population. So that would include those that are very severely immunocompromised, multiple comorbidities, and age. So that number is definitely dropping. That number was as high as 4% at the beginning. And that's because we continue boosters. Vaccines are highly effective. And Omicron had tended not have that same severity in it by and large. Hospitalizations among all vaccinated people is well under 1%, at 0.13%. And the death rate among those that have gotten COVID as a breakthrough is below 1% at a half a percent, and the total population is 0.04%. So that's good news. We were hoping, you know, that, you know, over time, that the disease, as we get more vaccines, as we got a vaccine, as we've gotten more people gotten infected and have some of, you know, from infection, some immunity, and the disease itself has varied towards a less severe, at least at this point in time, that, you know, those are the trends that we're at right now. So I'm going to stop sharing. And if you want, I can just keep going with some of my thoughts going forward, I think, if you're just for the sake of time. So over the past few months, the state's been transitioning away from sort of the crisis pandemic mode. Over the last couple of months, we've reduced contact tracing. The state doesn't contact trace. We do not. It's much more of a, we send the guidance and we tell people that they let their friends and family know. We don't call all the friends and family. The state's taken that away. We don't even get an immediate notification. So think about my email. I got an email notification of every case, so there's 4,000 emails, right? So I do not get an instant email. We have to go into our workflows and Maven and do what we would normally do with most diseases. We've encouraged home tests, which are off the testing range, so we don't really get into the contact tracing on home tests. So we're really, the state's worked towards self-reliance over the last couple of months and how they're looking at it. You know, my other, my other point would be that, you know, at schools and here at the Health Department, we've been beholden to what the DPH and DESI guidance has been doing all along. Why has the state done that? Well, the vaccine's highly effective and it's available to everyone over the age of five, which would include all your students and all your staff. It is our primary mitigation. There's, you know, we also have treatments. So think about ours, you know, think about the days of when we were wiping our Amazon boxes in 2020, right? We're not, we're not at that point. Why, why did we do it back then? We didn't know, you know, the severity was worse at that particular, I mean, Delta would be worse than the original, but right now we don't. We have the treatments that we need. They're coming. There's been some production issues, but we'll be getting to that. And so I think that's why the state sort of worked its way away from sort of that, you know, closures and all the mitigation things that we did previously is because in 2020, we were really hopeful that we'd get a vaccine, which we did, and we'd get treatments, which we did. So we got what we would hope for back, if you put yourself back to where you were in the spring of 2020. So mitigation was really designed originally not to be permanent. We were trying to keep, if you remember, hospitalizations down, and we didn't want to overwhelm the hospitals. So we got into mitigation mainly for that particular. When we were biologic in Falmouth anywhere or the Cape, successful. We didn't, you know, we opened up the Royal, the old Royal on Main Street as an overflow, and we didn't really need to use it. The hospital did that, and, you know, we've been able to sort of fend off at any, at any point so far in the pandemic. And so, you know, we've got what we need, you know, and talking with the state, the state does a call every week. And, you know, we had the lead epidemiologist, Dr. Katie Brown, she's brilliant. And, you know, she said that, you know, this isn't going to go away. She has no idea what's going to happen in the future. We don't know. But, you know, she did feel that, you know, we're, you know, in a point now where we're sort of in an endemic phase, where we're sort of, you know, coexisting with the virus. And so, you know, that being said, I mean, there is, you know, I'm not a mental health expert. I'm sure masks have done some effects on the kids that I probably would stay away from. That's not really my area. I, you know, anecdotally, I mean, somebody, some child in first grade has gone to school their entire school career with, you know, with masks. And so, you know, that's, you know, there's also some of that. Now, my board of health, we have a board of health meeting every couple of weeks, and, you know, we discuss COVID as an automatic on our agenda. They didn't vote for any recommendations or give you any guidance other than, you know, there wasn't a consensus. Of course, the board, you know, realizes that masks are mitigation and are effective. But they do also understand as the, you know, component of, you know, continuing on with mandates indefinitely as we're starting to coexist with it. They were curious about the timing, you know, especially coming off a winter break. Maybe that wasn't the best time for the state to do it. So that was the comments from the board. You know, as far as the Health Department, we're going to continue to monitor, you know, as things go up and down, as new variants come in. We know, obviously, we need to be able to pivot and be flexible with everything and everything that we do with COVID. You know, and I understand that coexisting, well, that means different things to different people. And that's sort of been a hard thing with this. But as far as my opinion, I think you can continue to follow the DPH guidance, the DESI guidance that's been provided to you all along. You could, I think you can remove the mandate and allow individuals to measure their own risk and make their own decisions. I mean, we're going to be with COVID for a long time, and at some point, we think we need to get to a point where we're making our own decisions with it. And obviously, if, you know, the next variant comes out and it's, you know, Delta on steroids, and we'll have to, you know, you know, regroup at that point. So the mitigation accomplished what we needed to do. It got us to a point where we were vaccinated. You know, we've gotten boosters, we've gotten treatments. And, you know, it might be at some point necessary to go back, but, you know, that's my opinion, and that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation and your opinion. We appreciate that. Dr. Parkinson, I'd like to invite you to join this conversation as well.
Sure. And thanks for the chance to speak. And once again, thanks to everybody who's worked so hard, you know, trying to, trying to keep everybody safe for so long. And, you know, I, I think I just, as usual, piggyback on, on what Scott said. And, you know, we've, we're now almost two years into this, and we're trying to decide, you know, what we would, you know, what, what should be the next move? And a lot of it has changed since we started doing this, you know. And Scott, you know, mentioned a number of the, number of the factors, you know, the ability to immunize now, the fact that there's better availability of testing, the fact that there's a higher community immunity, both through immunization and probably to some extent through all the people who got Omicron. And, and, you know, and then we take that and we kind of factor in, you know, what are the effects on the physical health versus what are the effects on the emotional health? You know, when I think about physical health, you know, my mind goes to, you know, my 85-plus-year-old parents. It goes to, you know, friends on chemotherapy. It goes to, you know, ICU admissions and availability of beds. And it also goes to, you know, the ability of people to get care that's not COVID-related in the hospital, which suffers, of course, when there's a huge surge of COVID because of the, you know, the the way it taxes the healthcare system and knocks out some of the healthcare workers. And, and so we're in this place right now, and, you know, and I think we have to keep in mind that, you know, we're in sort of a contradictory phase because, on the one hand, we know that this last variant was probably only about one-fourth is likely to make you hospitalized, but it was also four times as spready. So it was not insignificant in terms of the number of sick people. It was just less likely for any given person to, to cause a problem. And then, you know, we have to look at, you know, where we're at now, physically, you know, emotional health. And, you know, I've kind of used the weather forecast analogy throughout this whole, you know, these discussions as a way of trying to frame where we're at. And, you know, if, if a hurricane is coming, which is basically what November just said was going to happen in December and January, and which is what did happen, you know, you have to, you have to prepare for that. Mask use is part of that and all the other things that went into it. You know, when you, when you look at the kind of numbers that we were dealing with in Massachusetts of 24,000 people a day getting sick, it's just an incredibly high number. That's about where we were at four weeks ago. You know, within the last week, we've gone down to 2,000 cases a day. So, you know, you do your exponential math and, you know, it suggests in another two weeks, we're down to about 500 cases a day. So from the weather forecast point of view, you know, it's, it's, it's a good forecast. There's no, there's no imminent variance on the horizon. I think we have to be aware of that, you know, moving forward, you know, a little proactive on that if that kind of thing does happen. We're heading into spring when hopefully things will improve because they typically do, both for virus reasons and the fact that people get outdoors. And so, you know, I mean, just to sum that up, we're heading into a low, you know, into a trough of cases. And we're heading into a good season, and we don't have a variant out there which is, you know, about to start. People listening to me, you know, over the last couple of years, you know, will know I, I'm relatively conservative on this, trying to protect the vulnerable people. But I, I think that also we have to say, you know, when the opportunity presents itself, you know, you have to be reasonable and not just reactive because of fear of something that there isn't the data to support. So right now, where we're moving, you know, is, is to better weather. And as much as, as I said, as I've been conservative in the past, you know, I think we have to give a chance for some normalcy when it presents itself, and it appears to be presenting itself. That's not to say, like Scott said, if things turn, we have to be able to say it's, 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 we would pivot. We have to be able to say that we're, you know, not going to ignore something that's coming. But I think we also have to say, hey, if we try this and it doesn't go well, then we have to be responsive to that. But I think, you know, we also have to be reasonable and say, you know, we know that all this, you know, prevention stuff we've been doing has, you know, a mental health component to it. And we're now at a point where maybe we should think about trying to, trying to see if we can go without the masks, you know, in the, in the schools. I'm not talking about healthcare or, yeah, I'm not talking about people who are vulnerable or, you know, other special situations, but specifically in the schools. And then the other question, you know, just to be preemptive about it is, well, what about when they get back from school versus waiting a couple of weeks? And, you know, I think you could argue that one. You know, what I've said before is if you're, if you have 20,000 cases a day, and let's say you get a 10% bump after the holidays, well, that's 2,000 cases. If you have 2,000 cases a day and you get a 10% bump, that's 200 cases across the whole state, you know, so which we maybe get two more cases than we would if we don't wait. So I think because the numbers are going down, a bump, you know, percentage-wise might look like a lot. But in terms of the real number of cases, probably it's going to be low. And, and then the last thing I'll say is, looking back at what happened last year, we did have a bump in the spring, but at least statewide, it was more of a mid-March into April bump rather than right on the heels of school vacation. So I'm not convinced that waiting that week or two or whatever after vacation really would impact in the way you'd want it to.
This has been very helpful. Thank you. So school committee, any questions or comments for either Scott or Greg? Leah?
So I have a question. It's just, you know, things come at us so fast that are different and sometimes conflicting. And the commissioner had put out prior to last week that if a school had 80% or more vaccinated, that that would allow the school to decide, you know, to unmask. But that vaccinated people would still be masked. There's been a sea change with this, and I'm just wondering a little bit about the medical reason for this or research base or data that would support this change of the commissioner having, coming out with that mandate? And now that we have a different one?
I would say, first of all, 80% vaccination rate in schools is based on, you know, unless there was some overwhelming change in popular opinion, is just not going to happen. And so if we waited for that metric, you'd be looking at the entire school year with, you know, with people masked is what I suspect. The, the second thing is that, you know, we do have the benefit of knowing that, you know, in some ways, I mean, that, that came out before the Omicron variant. I mean, the Omicron variant, as, you know, shown by that statistic that Scott showed with the huge spike, I mean, there were a huge number of people got that. Suspicion is, you know, it's hard to know. We know that one variant doesn't necessarily confer immunity to future variants, but it certainly helps, and it helps in terms of severity of infection. So I, I think those two things are what I would point to and say that, that they're different. Plus the fact we're heading into spring.
So there was one other piece to that because there was also the mandate that unvaccinated would have to still mask. So just medical opinion about that.
You know, I, I'm not sure that there's a, I'm not sure that that's a medical question as much as it is one that ties in a lot of, you know, a lot of differences of view of the world, as much as I'm a mask proponent. I think it's, I think, you know, that's, that's not for me to make. That's a decision of the committee. But it, it would invite a lot of consternation, I would suspect. And you'd have to ask at what benefit.
So just a clarification of that because I was under the impression that that was to protect people who are unvaccinated from contracting COVID. I was under the impression that that was to protect people who are unvaccinated from contracting COVID. Um, so I think that's, that was my mindset of it, but just.
Well, that's, that is, uh, it's true that, I mean, when you mask, you protect yourself and you protect other people. Um, you know, uh, people have chosen to vaccinate or not at this point. They've chosen to vaccinate their children or not at this point. Um, there is a pretty strong correlation between people who have chosen not to vaccinate and who, um, are, um, pushing to become, uh, unmasked. And as I say, I think, um, you have to say, what is the net gain of that? And, you know, in terms of cases, there probably would be some. Um, whether it justifies, uh, a policy is not for me to say.
Andrea?
I think they'll have a scan at first.
Um, first of all, I want to echo the appreciation for everybody who has emailed in. And we have heard a wide variety of arguments that were well thought out, um, from many different standpoints. Um, one of the things that I saw that came up on a fairly regular basis, for those who are concerned, is that, um, you know, the CDC guidance seems to be different sometimes than what, local places are doing and so forth. And, and, and Scott, you did a great job of showing us some numbers from Falmouth and from Barnstable County. And we're, we're talking about a, a local issue here and, and the situation that we're in in Falmouth and in Massachusetts and New England. So, I just want to clarify, um, that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but when the CDC is making decisions, I'm getting on a plane tomorrow and I'm, I'm gonna be wearing this, and I don't see that going anywhere anytime soon. The, the CDC has to make those decisions based on the numbers across the entire country, correct? So, so they're taking into account states like Alabama, Wyoming, Mississippi, Los An- or not Los Angeles, the other LA, Louisiana, um, and, and the numbers there and the vaccination rates, they have to take all of that into account for nationwide policies. Would, would that be correct?
Yep.
Right. So, just to clarify, I see this more as a, a decision where it would probably be best to look at our local numbers versus something that's averaged out across the country. Would, would you agree with that?
Uh, yeah, if we had a twenty percent vaccination rate, we'd have a higher case count. We don't have a vaccination of twenty percent. Going back to that chart, ninety-six percent of the eligible residents have had at least one dose amount in this town. So, yeah, you gotta kind of look at it locally. And getting back to the Fed versus state, I'll give you another example, the food code. The FDA writes a food code, the state can choose whether they want to adopt it or not. The FDA food code has no wait until a state adopts it. And it's the same thing with guidance from, uh, from the CDC on this. The states would choose to adopt it. So we followed the state, um, and, and the absence of the state would look at the CDC, but that's, that's, yeah, so, you know, they, they have to look at what's going on elsewhere and what, what, what it looks like and, and make a call for everybody, not just, you know, locally.
Right. And I, I know a lot of people are concerned, but just, just for everyone out there listening, Massachusetts, i- i- as far as the fifty, the fifty states is, is fifth in the country as far as vaccination rates, and the other four are Connecticut, Maine, Vermont, and Rhode Island. So,
Yes.
Now, we're, th- those five states are in the top five for vaccination rates.
So essentially, sorry.
And Louisiana.
So the state, the state of Massachusetts saying you can re-put yourself, and since you guys did a great job vaccinating, you can, you know, this is where we're at. And like I said earlier in my discussion, that the state's moving towards the endemic sort of, you know, treating it like, you know, other diseases as opposed to sort of, you know, the immediacy that was of the prior two years that really, you know, put a lot of burden on the health departments, no doubt. Um, but yeah, so I think the state's saying, you know, you know, high vaccination rates, and I think they're really looking at that chart I showed you that shows you that, you know, hospitalizations among those who are vaccinated clearly to me show the vaccine needs to work. There's just no way for us to butt about it, so.
Thank you. Um, Andrea?
Uh, yes, I, I actually have two questions for Dr. Parkinson. Um, the first one, I, I was just sort of rethinking based on what Scott was just saying there, but I guess I, I'm wondering, we're looking at vaccination rates, and we have a bunch of data for schools. And do you consider, do you see a difference between, um, what we used to consider fully vaccinated with two doses and having a booster? Because we, we're noticing there's just a really low number on, uh, the percentage that are, have been boosted. Do you see there any differences, um, you know, I guess with, uh, you know, the severity or hospitalizations or anything that we should be concerned about there?
Yeah, but, no, you're right. That is a concern, Andrea. And, and, um, you know, being vaccinated and not boosted definitely confers protection versus being unvaccinated, but being boosted definitely confers protection over not being boosted. And, um, and so, um, you know, if, if I was looking at a statistic overall, you know, uh, uh, the rate of death among, um, if you compare, uh, vaccinated, not boosted people to unvaccinated people, it's now about twelve, twelve-fold. But vaccinated and boosted, you're about fifty times less likely, uh, to, to die of COVID. So, I think that, um, in the, in the younger age group, we are actually seeing quite a bit of that where we, we, and I, I think I would use your question as a, as a call to remind everybody to still get your booster. Um, it, it continues to help, and hopefully, this is not gonna be too frequent down the road, but, uh, you know, yes, that, it, it is important.
Thank you. Um, and my second question was, uh, I was wondering what your experience has been, um, with COVID and children under the age of five? Um, what are you seeing in your practice there? Since we know that that's a group that is not eligible to get a vaccine, and we do have pre-K programs in our schools.
Right. So, um, it's a good question, and fortunately, um, relatively speaking, uh, COVID tends to be a very mild illness in young children, in most young children. Now, if you go nationwide and you go, um, you know, kids with, um, you know, uh, underlying conditions, uh, and, and you look at the numbers, you know, in terms of, you know, we'll get to this at a later date in, in terms of, you know, vaccination for that age group. But overall, you know, most of the viral illnesses, if you look at the flu, for example, the point I make every day in the offices, even before we immunized everybody and we only immunized the elderly and the, and the people with diabetes and asthma, et cetera, we also immunized the undertoes. Um, COVID thankfully does not seem to have that same effect on young people. You know, the flu and RSV are significantly more severe illnesses uh, for the young than, um, those are. And, and I think it's good to throw those out as a comparison because you can never say never with these things. Um, we don't have a vaccine for RSV. Vast majority of kids get through it okay, but substantial number of babies get hospitalized, and there's some, you know, can be some deaths involved. Uh, the flu, we have a vaccine, we, we recommend it, you know? But both of those, unvaccinated, are more severe illnesses on average than COVID is.
Thank you so much.
Great. And Lori, since we're speaking of vaccination rates, could you give us a quick snapshot of where we are in our schools at this point?
Uh, yes. So, our vaccinated staff is at eighty-five percent, and vaccinated students overall is fifty-five point four percent. Broken down into age groups, uh, five and, five to eleven-year-olds is forty-three percent, twelve to fifteen-year-olds sixty-five point five percent, and sixteen to nineteen-year-olds is seventy-six percent.
Excellent. And also, do we know, um, the new program where we can do at-home testing? About where do we rest with those numbers, with staff and students?
Uh, yeah. So the at-home testing program, we have four hundred and fifty-four staff members participating. We have one thousand one hundred and fifty-nine students participating.
Thank you. How does that, what is that percentage? I can pull that up somewhere.
Basically, a third of students, because you're about three thousand.
Yeah.
And about.
Eighty-five, is it?
Thirty.
Sorry.
Three-fourths, first time.
Yeah. I have eight, I have eighty-five, but it should be thirty-five between seventy-five and eighty-five percent. Yeah. Um, questions? Any other questions? Melissa?
Dr. Parkinson, can you speak to natural immunity? How long does it last? People that have had the vac- people that have, uh, had the, uh, vaccine and then have still broke through with the COVID? People that have not had the vaccine but have got the COVID? And what does our natural immunity look like? Just a quick snapshot, if you could.
Yeah, how long have you got?
So, in a quick, like, so, really not.
I, I understand, I understand. Harassing you because.
I know.
Um, so, okay. Um, it, first of all, um, this is a, you know, this is a work in progress, and we, we know that infection confers some immunity. We know that vaccination confers immunity. Um, with vaccination, you've got which, you know, pick which vaccine you're using, pick how many doses you've had. With infection, pick which variant you've had, and pick which variant is coming. So, for example, one of the things that we found was that, um, you know, there was the standard, um, you should be okay for ninety days if you've been infected, um, and, and unlikely to get infected again in that period of time. Omicron didn't really follow those rules, and there were some people who were less than ninety days since Delta who got it. So, that's why I say, you know, how long have you got? Because it really depends on, uh, you know, which vaccine you got, which variant you got, um, which variant is coming. And, and so, I, I think we can safely say that all of those confer some immunity. It, it appears that none of them confer permanent immunity, and it appears that, um, the more you have, whether it's, uh, vaccination or you got over an infection, you know, the, the, the higher number of ticks you get in your, in your COVID, uh, box, that probably confers more protection from serious illness. And, you know, that, that's about as, that's about as quick as I can make.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Um, any other questions for Scott or Dr. Parkinson? Leah?
I just, um, I'm not sure this is really a question, but I, I think that, you know, it, it is a wonderful asset to have in our schools now, to be able to provide home testing for all of our staff and all of our students. Um, I guess just, Dr. Parkinson, and, and I guess this would be for, for Scott too, of looking at, I know that there was a lot of talk about, you know, PCR versus the home testing. But do you feel that the home tests would provide a level of, um, just safety for our students and staff if, if they were done consistently at home?
It's, it's a trade-off, and, you know, a- a- as you know, and, and I, I, you know, I, I feel for the average layperson because even with, you know, medical background, the, the, the number of, you know, uh, things that come at you and the changing opinion, um, really makes a difference in terms of what we say about these things. And keeping in mind that not all home tests are created equal, and you want to have one that's FDA-approved and has a reasonable level of sensitivity. But, um, I, I would, I would say, you know, again, just to try and make something very complicated as, as straightforward as they can make it, is that, um, if you want to know about the presence of COVID period or not, to, to, uh, you know, uh, then the best test is the PCR test. Um, but sometimes the sensitivity is so good that it's actually picking up an infection that's not current. And so, the tests that the, um, the rapid test is tended to miss tend to be the, I mean, the, the positives that it's tended to miss are, are more likely to be people without symptoms um, because your viral load is not as high, and you need a higher viral load to be picked up on the, on the rapid, you know, antigen test. Now, having said that, in terms of cost and in terms of availability, the rapid test is far in, um, in, you know, i- i- in the, in the pros column in terms of that. And, you know, the way that things are going is that if, um, if you, uh, you know, have a widely available rapid test at home, in the perfect world where everybody had them at home and everybody was conscientious, and at the first sign of anything, they did a test at home, and maybe they do a test this one day later because two rapid tests is really quite good. Um, so if you negative the first time and you still have symptoms that seem suggestive, you know, twenty-four to forty-eight hours later, you do a second one, and two negative rapid tests, and, and that approaches the sensitivity of the, of the PCR test. So, you know, um, what I'm saying is, um, you know, if we want to, um, you know, get the best bang for our buck in terms of what the average person at home has, uh, you know, if we all had an endless supply of rapid antigen tests and could test ourselves liberally whenever we needed to, that would really make a huge difference, and that's kind of where we're being pushed to go, and I think for good reason. So, I guess how we conclude, you know, this part of the, the, the discussion by saying, I really do encourage people to sign up for those tests with their kids because it is very valuable to have at home to, you know, you test yourself at home, you catch it earlier, you expose less people, you don't expose the healthcare worker, uh, by going there. Um, you avoid jamming up the healthcare system, um, so that, you know, people are waiting six hours to get a test in the emergency room, and it keeps the, the trauma from, you know, getting as, as, as much attention as it should. So, bottom line is, if, you know, please sign up for the rapid test program.
Thank you.
You're good. Thank you.
Um, and so, a question for Lori, it's a two-part question. Number one, could you speak to, um, you know, we received feedback from families and some staff members that email. Could you report on, um, the, the, the feedback that you received via survey? And then part two is if we, uh, vote to lift the mandate, could you speak to the mitigation strategies that will still be in place at the schools?
Sure. So, um, first I want to thank, um, all of our, our union groups, um, for, uh, for taking polls, um, so that they can give us feedback. So, our food service custodians and secretaries agree with the, uh, mask optional, meaning to lift, uh, the mask on the twenty-eighth and then allow, um, individuals to choose uh, whether to, um, to wear a mask or not wear a mask. Um, a specific, uh, shout-out to the FDA union, um, that they conducted a full survey among their, uh, members, um, to, to provide feedback for the school committee tonight. Um, so thank you for that. Um, they had a hundred and eighty-eight, uh, respond. This was as of last Friday. Um, sixty percent were in favor of ending the mask update. Thirty-one percent were against ending the mask man- update, but many wrote in comments that they would, uh, be okay with it at a later date. Uh, and nine percent had no opinion. So, when you look at that, it would be ninety, or sixty-nine percent, um, that would be okay with ending the mask mandate.
Thank you. And mitigation strategies?
Yeah. So we do have a, uh, just to remind everyone, we have a COVID team that meets, uh, every Friday or most Fridays, um, uh, now, and then there's, there may be a conflict, and part of the, the, or the COVID team consists of, uh, Dr. Parkinson, uh, Scott McGann, our, uh, nurse coordinator, uh, Lori Weisman, uh, Dr. Joan Woodward, and, uh, our two, uh, COVID, uh, team members, um, Asia, uh, and, uh, Paul. And so, we meet Friday, we bring in people, uh, when there are specific questions, like a principal. And so we meet Friday, we bring in people uh when there are specific questions, like a principal about an event or so that's at the school that um, has a specific question. So what we will be doing is monitoring the data uh closely. And we will still be advising um, on specific activities and events moving forward. Uh, following the DUCY guidance, which we have done uh since the beginning. There are exceptions to um lifting the mask mandate. Uh, we would still be wearing a mask on the school buses because that was a federal mandate. Uh, and then uh, all students and staff returning to school on day six, asymptomatic or symptom resolving uh, following a positive COVID test uh would also need to wear a mask uh through day ten. And we would still be wearing masks in our school health offices. Uh, uh, also um, would say um, so we recommend this, the, the um, the, from the DUCY guidance, it was recommended that if you're unvaccinated, that you continue to, to wear a mask. And so that's a recommendation, not a mandate. You know, so that, that can be in place. And I agree with um, Dr. Parkinson and, and Scott. Anyone that wants to wear a mask um, can wear a mask. We have plenty of uh KN95s um, that anyone could have at any time to wear if that makes people cut more comfortable. Um, we also have a surgical mask all through our schools. Uh, if that makes people comfortable. And uh, I do believe um, that our, our staff is wonderful and I believe that they will make um us, their colleagues and students feel comfortable uh wearing a mask um, if that's what people choose to, to do.
Great, thank you. Um, any other questions for either Greg or Scott or Dr. Dorr?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
For, for Lori. So um, something that Dr. Parkinson mentioned um, that it would be great if you had a sore throat and you decided to test before exposing anybody, which would be wonderfully responsible and maybe prevent other people from getting exposed. But that sore throat might not happen on Wednesday morning. So um, which is when we test if you're in the program. So do we have the ability to provide all those participating staff and families? You know, a bonus one so that they could, you know, how would that, do we have, is that an option? I know that it's a complicated process to get the test to them, but if we could encourage people to use them, not just on Wednesday, but if you feel lousy on Monday morning, please use your tests.
I mean, correct. I mean, this, this is a state program and they are um, only allowing, so we only get um, the number of tests delivered that are in the program. And we only get um, we're only allowed a test um, one kit every two weeks, two, two tests. So that would be each week. With that said, um, we have purchased our own test and we are trying to um, use them strategically. We don't have uh, you know, unlimited um, testing. For instance, um, working collaboratively with uh the FDA, uh, we've um, they had made a suggestion that if we could possibly um, provide an extra test. So on uh, the day of returning that the staff and students that are participating on the twenty-eighth, the morning of the twenty-eighth, they would have a test to um, to give, to take that morning.
Right.
Um, and then the other test. So that means everyone will have a, one additional test at home. Because the, the boxes have two in it. So if people would use one that morning and then they would have one others. We also have the symptomatic testing in school, right? So if anyone's having any type of symptoms, uh, we do have the test kits uh in the schools for the symptomatic uh staff or students. Uh, and that certainly uh is a, an assessment of the nurse and their expertise. Whether that's the, you know, necessary or not necessary or, you know, um, even if symptoms seem non-COVID but related, you know, they still may send a student home as they have for years. Um, you know, for colds, flus, you know, um, that type of thing, uh, the normal. So with the symptomatic testing and our weekly testing um, that we, we have, and then this additional test kit that we were fortunate that we were able to, to uh provide our um, participating families and stuff.
So I just want to make sure I, I get it. So everyone who's part, so the, the program that you're mentioning at the request of uh FDA's idea to have that extra one, which I think is brilliant because we're all going to be coming back together. It, because the tests come into, everybody who's participating will have a test for that day and then they would have an extra one. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, so they would have.
Okay, so kind of already are doing that.
Yeah, kind of. I don't know that we can just.
Continue it for.
Right, I could, because we only have X amount and um, of tests. They're not easy to get and they're extremely um, expensive. I think, I want to get, um, Patrick has done a great job at uh being able to, you know, find the test for us. But it's just not unlimited that we could do that at all times. Um, I also want to point out that there's a federal website um, that you can get for free tests. Uh, every family could do that and have that.
Yeah, ask for it now because I, I did it the first day and I still didn't get mine.
I didn't, I didn't know that, but okay.
And the reason, one of the reasons that I have is not um, is also because the tests are expensive. And, you know, it's, it's not right that this is a healthcare matter that all of our families need and many do not have access to. So um, if there's the opportunity, you know, beyond what, what the school is already able to provide, I just think it's a really important piece.
So one additional um, strategy that, that we um, that we use uh, is that um, those that are under the um, participating with the um, family or the uh, Fama Service Center. Um, we've provided tests through them for the families. So that was part of the um, mitigating strategy that we used when we purchased the test. So um, families that qualify through the Family Service Center are receiving tests.
Um, and then my. Sorry, I had a little thing about that. Just keep in mind, there is a use, uh, best of use by date, so to speak, and some of them are relatively short. I think the ones I had were November. So just keep that in mind when you order and keep that in mind when you have them at home, that there is a, an expiration date to that, that's all.
Thank you. I did not know that.
Oh, yeah.
And then my, my second question is around um, some of the mitigation strategies that you mentioned that from day six to day ten, um, returning staff and students would be required to mask. And I'm just wondering, you know, logistically, how do we think that might happen? Is there a plan in place? Like, how does it happen now? And will that sort of inform that type of um, process? Because I imagine it's complicated.
True. Our numbers are much lower right now. Uh, and I mean, we certainly have on record that um, we have our administration staff, the nurses uh that have access to that. Uh, so we know um, who's been, well, identified um, who's been uh out with COVID. So we know um, when they come back. So we do have a, a system that uh identifies that's, a certain student will be back on a certain day. And the, the administration then knows that that, that student would be wearing a mask. And certainly that's then passed um, to, to the staff all through the day. So there is something in place that we have been doing.
Okay, and it would just sort of follow that same model.
Yeah.
Feel like I had another question, but I can't think of it. Maybe it'll come to me later.
Leah, um, so I, I have, I have a couple of things, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump on that because um, so, actually, I totally forgot what that was.
Makes me feel better, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna go back to my other thing. So I was, you know, one thing that I do think is missing on what um, the, the guy, there are the required pieces around mask care right now is um, we are doing the in-school symptomatic testing. And it doesn't say anything about a child who is sick having to wear a mask. So um, I'm just wondering about that.
So again, we would use the expertise of the nurse, uh, whether the uh child would, or staff member would be tested, whether they would be sent home, which is a typical practice when we have um, children that have colds or flu, you know, flu, like symptoms would be sent home anyway. So um, until symptoms resolve.
Okay, but there's no masking. Uh, that's, I, that, it's just, that seems like a, maybe a missing piece there.
Certainly something that we could bring up at our COVID team meeting this Friday um, to discuss.
Yeah, because that just makes sense to me.
Can I answer that? If the kid, if a child says they have flu-like symptoms, put the mask on the child immediately. That, that, that should be pretty straightforward, I think, though.
Um, I just, we would have to make that part of.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think maybe it was an oversight because I think the expectation was that you would do that if there was, but yeah. I mean, that's probably an oversight on DUCY when they wrote it.
Okay, now I have two questions, so I'm gonna let you finish your.
So I, I, I just wanted to um, also talk about the home tests. Because I do think that what I like about the home tests and that what I've heard very clearly from parents is wanting to have kind of a say on how they are protecting their children and whether their children are masking or not. But I like this ability of being able to kind of determine sometimes whether or not you need to use that home test. I know in my house, um, you know, we are all signed up, me through my own school district, my kids through their school districts and um, so I just feel like when someone is symptomatic in my house, I have resources available to me right there. And I have been able to do what, what Dr. Parkinson was talking about of there's symptoms in the house, I'm able to test and then retest. And um, so I think that, you know, signing up for this program, it does give some flexibility. Though I know there's a recommendation of doing it on Wednesdays, but if someone is symptomatic during that time, you have a resource there to use. Um, so I just wanted to add that to why I think it's really important to sign up for this. Thank you. Uh, Melissa?
Um, I just had a quick question about the wearing of the mask when you have uh cold, like, there's a lot of kids that have allergies and I just want to make sure that that piece isn't missing. Just because you're sneezing and your eyes are watery doesn't mean that you're um, any, if you have allergies, which a lot of people do, I don't want that piece to go missing and have them be uh, wearing masks unnecessarily because it makes it worse.
So that's, that's why I always say, let's go back to the expertise of our nurses that has done this for years and they know their children. Right, and that's, um, we have a wonderful nursing staff and I would like to defer to, to them on, on these type of.
I just wanted to have listeners view.
Yeah.
Put out that.
Andrea?
I'm wondering if um, you've had time to talk through um, what types of strategies or changes might need to be in place for our pre-K programs? Any new plans for that?
So it's on uh, the topic to discuss this Friday. I don't know if Dr. Parkinson or Scott wants to say anything now, but it is on.
Okay.
The, my list. Thank you.
Um, any other?
Yeah, so I finally remember what my first one was. Um, so in that, it's coming back to that six to ten day window. So our expectation is that um, people returning will be masked. Because there are so few requirements to be masked that it would be optional except for certain circumstances. If families refuse to mask, then what? Do, is it an excused absence? Are they unexcused?
Um, are you saying if we don't?
No, I'm saying if our expectation is that people are masked with, in the six to ten day window.
Oh.
And the families don't um, allow that to happen.
They, they would, right, they would go home.
They would go home and it would be um, an unexcused absence or depending on, I guess that's a case by case thing, but I just wanted to. I wanted, they would go home. They, I, that's basically what I was wondering. And then um.
Which has been the practice up through now. So that, that'll, that strategy would not change.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, so I just, I had a follow-up. I'm so happy to pick that up because that was exactly what I wanted to talk about. So I'm just thinking, and I don't know what this is, what this would look like in our schools if the majority of staff and students are going to be unmasked if we pass this. But I'm, I'm thinking in that situation where most people are typically unmasked. And then we have our students and our staff who are in that six to ten days masking. I just feel like, you know, that is their own private health information that we're like now viewing because we now see, especially if they weren't masked before, now they're masked. Because that is their, it's.
So, yeah, I, I just, um, because everyone has a choice whether to mask or not. And it may not be, if you want to start on the twenty-eighth that you're masked, doesn't mean that on March fifteenth, you're gonna mask, right? Or you might pick it back up at different times. I do think we're gonna see a lot of uh staff and students that are masking or may not be masking. Um, you know, which we also see in public.
Yeah.
I think, I think our docs are going to make it um, extremely acceptable for people to wear masks. And I, and I, I do hear what you're saying. I mean, there, there can be concerns, but um, I'm gonna go back to one of the things that Scott says is that we gotta live with this. We gotta figure out how, how to live with this. And um, there are, there are certain recommendations or mandates around this that um, it's a part of it.
Yeah.
Well. You, you make a great point. Uh, because obviously we can make masks optional, but behavior can't be optional. You've got to toe the line on behavior as far as maybe dehumanizing the student who has a mask on and I don't. Or what, whatever. So I think the teachers, the administration has to be really, really demanding on that and real, realistic in that. But, but I, you know, I take your point. I think about that as a, as a principle at one time. And looking at kids and harassing and, and no, there's, there's no room for that. Make masks optional. Behavior is not, we have to come in here and behave and not intimidate and uh harass other kids who may be masked. I do agree with Dr. Dorr that uh, masks will come on and off if, if we saw, make it optional. One comment I have to make is, when this whole process started, we were going to, as a committee, vote to have masks or not have masks. And DUCY stepped in the day before and indicated that everybody will mask. Now we're at the point where DUCY came in again and said, the twenty-eighth, you make the decision. We feel scientifically, professionally, that. And again, I thank Scott and Dr. Parkinson's for their input. Man, has that been great because I'm one of those individuals that look at and say, well, come back to twenty-eight. The timing on this is terrible. And maybe it's not. But DUCY's made that recommendation. And I look at that recommendation and said, you did the science, you did the legwork, you did the previous legwork. We should look at that and think of that very seriously.
Any other questions or comments by school committee members? Yes.
I would, I would just like to echo, I actually had that written down as a point. Uh, what Bill Ryder just said is that we, we made a point of trusting DUCY's judgment um, at one point. And I think it would be, uh, maybe even hypocritical if we now said, well, now, now we don't, we don't trust their judgment, their expertise.
Thank you. I will briefly open public comment to anyone who has not emailed the school committee already. Um, and then part two is because this is part of public record, we ask that you make sure that your first and last name is listed. Uh, because we do have to record who uh shares public comments. So we'll start with Geraldine Camilli, and I apologize if I said your last name incorrectly.
Yep. Thank you. No, that was correct. Uh, my name is Geraldine Camilli. Uh, I am the parent of a vaccinated first grader at Mullen Hall and of a three-year-old who is not yet eligible for any approved vaccine at this time. Uh, Governor Baker recently lifted the mask mandate for schools citing the low transmission rate in schools. But without acknowledging that the low rate likely relies on children wearing masks in schools. As our health agent pointed out, most hospital cases are patients who were not vaccinated. He also mentioned that vaccines and treatment are widely available, but neither of these are available to young children, at least not for another few months. We also have very limited information about the long-term effects of COVID for this vulnerable population. I, like many parents with younger children, have been relying on masks to keep my youngest child safe. She interacts with her brother, but also at preschool with children who have siblings in Fama schools. Mitigation is the only protection from breakthrough cases for them right now. Mitigation is the only protection from breakthrough cases for them right now. Without masks, we are unnecessarily exposing them and all those who cannot be vaccinated. There is no vaccine available for young children at this time, but we're getting very close. Pfizer is planning on applying for approval in April. Removing the masks in schools right now, right after the return from school vacation is exposing young children before they can even be vaccinated. Please hear the voices who cannot be heard and cannot vote. Our young children who cannot yet be protected still rely on mitigation measures like masks. Thank you for hearing my comments tonight.
Thank you, Geraldine. Um, and I just would like to remind um Chrissy and William that we need your first and last name before we are able to call on you, so we're going to move to rate. Can you tell them how to do it? We might not know how to change that. Okay, so I'm gonna walk you through it. Yeah, so there are three. If you hover over your box, there are three three dots. If you click on that, you should see an option to um change your name or add your last name. So while uh you're working through that and same for Mark, if you could just make sure that your last name appears. So Chrissy, William and Mark, uh your last names need to appear. So we will go to Jay, uh Rachel Jacoba. And I apologize if I.
You did fine. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. So yeah, so I'm Rachel Jacoba and I have two kids at Northbound Elementary School, a second grader and a fourth grader. And I just wanted to say that, first of all, I really have um appreciated all the safety measures that the schools have had in place. That I felt really safe sending my kids to school. Um, and I think that as we decide, you know, whether to take masks on or off, I think one thing that would be really valuable is to tie it to some level of um of community spread or number of positive cases in the community. I mean, as Scott said earlier, it's all, you know, we have, there are very local possibilities of transmission. And I think that, you know, hopefully Omicron is the last variant we see where we have to be really concerned about this. But I don't know that that's the case. And so I think if we make a decision to take the masks off, I would really encourage the the school committee and and the administration to to have that tied to some metrics that we could fall back on. If we need to, if there is, um, you know, heaven forbid, another wave that we have to be concerned about. So I would really encourage um thinking about when we take the masks off to be tied to a level of oh, you know, a low level of positive case rates in the um in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Um, so once again, Chrissy, William and Mark. Oh, okay. Hang on one second. We're gonna work through our word technology.
Technology.
Yeah.
Um, they're not sure that they can do it uh uh as an attendee to change their their name. So um if they are promoted.
Okay, yeah.
Maybe just.
Okay, yeah, okay, that's good. Okay, so Chrissy, uh we will promote you and if you could tell us your first and last name, please. And you're muted at this point. Hi Chrissy, you're still muted. I'll give you a few more seconds and then I'll move to William and come back to you if necessary. Okay, uh Chrissy, while you work through that, because you're still muted, so we can't hear you if you're speaking. Um, we will go to William.
Hi.
Okay, um.
Hi, could you tell us your name, please?
Hi, this is um, this is Sarah and William Langdon. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um, so we're the parents of a kindergartner student at T Ticket Elementary. And uh we just want to let you guys know the reason why you should all vote to make masks optional. Um, and here's the reason. So high quality masks are now widely available. As as you've said, you have them readily available for people that that need them or want them. Vaccines are widely available. As Dr. Parkinson mentioned, there is the availability of testing. And there is an increase in immunity um from people having COVID as the charts from uh Scott showed. So we have several layers of protection. Um, one of those layers is wearing a mask. And one way masking in particular with a high quality mask such as the N95, which is readily available. It does protect the person wearing it. So if people are around your child are not wearing masks, you can still choose for your child to mask. And that would offer an extra layer of protection. Every family has to make the right decision for them. And that's what this comes down to. So please do the right thing and vote to make masks optional. Thank you. Um, that's all.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Um, and Chrissy. I think you are still.
That problem with the old version.
It it could be. No.
I think that are no, okay.
So uh we will move forward and I believe William was Sarah.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Um, so Sarah, if you could put your hand down, that would be wonderful. Um, is there any other public comment?
I I just want to make one point of clarification. Um, the the as far as the the mask availability goes, uh you know, we might well be able to get kids to wear KN95 masks. Uh, I've been totally overwhelmed in a positive way with the ability of kids to wear masks. Think expecting young kids to wear N95 masks as somebody who's worn one regularly since this. Yeah, it's not really feasible to expect a young kid to wear an N95 mask all day long. There is, it's a whole other level of discomfort that those of us in healthcare are well familiar with. And people with underlying conditions, but um so just just point of clarification.
Great, thank you. Um, Mike Haylen.
Okay, is this work, I hope?
Hi.
Hi.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, Michael Hillen, Cliffwood Lane. I just wanted to jump on. I've been watching all night and thank you all for what you do and thank you Scott and uh Dr. Parkinson. Um, I just wanted to thank all the kids who wrote letters. I read some online today and it's been a rough couple of years for these kids. But and the parents and the teachers and staff, but I want to say that the last two years, these kids in our district did everything that they were asked to do from Desi. And if Desi and and Governor Baker are going to change the guidelines come uh March 1st. If we've been following them and Scott and Dr. Parkinson seem to be in line, why would we stop following the guidances now? And uh, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Mike. Let's just, we're just gonna touch. Um, V Anderson, could you tell us your first and last name, please?
Um. Oh, am I unmuted?
Yes, you you're fine. We can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Um, Valerie Anderson. Um, I have a daughter at Falmouth High School and I have a daughter at the Upper Cape. Um, they will be going into their senior year um come September and they've spent their entire um high school experience, you know, and I know it's not the fault. I mean, it is what it is. Um, I'm coming from a point of uh as a mother with a daughter who has suffered severe anxiety, took to self harming. Um, I'm not asking, you know, the ma mandates be for everyone. I I just want it to be optional. Um, because maybe mental health isn't a significant portion to you, but it has affected our family dramatically. It's been such an emotional roller coaster. And I'm just asking that they get to enjoy, you know, some of what's left of their high school experience. And, you know, I appreciate you allowing me to talk. Um, little nervous, sorry, I hate public speaking, but. Um, so I am coming and I I have many other mothers whose children have experienced depression, self harm. Um, suicidal ideations. This has been extremely stressful. And I feel like it's time to give them some sort of normalcy and a chance to appreciate, you know, they've been courageous, they've been brave. I think it's time for us to be brave and allow them to enjoy their childhood. And if they want to mat, you know, if if parents want their children masked, I'm 100% for them. No one's going to bully any, you know, we're not, I know, we're not that kind of family. I'm just asking for some sort of normalcy for my daughter. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Valerie. We appreciate that. Um, so seeing that that was the last comment, is there any other questions or comments from the school committee before we make a motion? Melissa, go ahead.
I just have a clarification, just um to understand a little bit about what the commissioner has put out for us. Because we were under a mandate before around the masking piece. And it is, it's a little bit different for us now to be able to make a local decision around that. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify that um that there was, we didn't have any wiggle room around things before. And now we do have an ability to make a local decision. So I just a clarification.
I guess, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
No, go ahead. I I guess I I have a question sort of tied to that because if, because we would be making a motion to change our local process, how does that work? Like, does the motion have to have all these specific things that we might have mentioned? Do we need a policy in place for that? How, logistically, how do we? If we were to vote to lift the mandate, how do we actually do that? Correct. Okay, great question. So first, whatever we vote is about lifting the mandate. Part two of that is we will need to then revise our policy. We currently have a policy related to masking. Um, MAS C submitted an updated policy. So it would be sort of my understanding or expectation, the policy subcommittee would meet and craft um a new policy for us going forward. And I don't imagine all those things could happen before the 28th, so will we be operating without a policy? So Lori and I briefly had this conversation that ideally the the um policy subcommittee can meet before. Okay. Um, and so that we would immediately be able to vote something. But in the in the interim, um, you know, if we voted to lift on the 28th, then we would have a policy drafted. And Andrea, being on policy, we can speak to that process a little bit more um in terms of, you know, anticipated turnaround time between the MAS C updated policy and being able to bring something to the school committee for a vote.
Yeah, and I guess um I I think basically um we would then be asking to uh waive probably the first and second reads um to.
But.
Yeah. Condense that timeframe to something that would happen more quickly.
More important. The policies that are written now, say in the policy, if something changes, if something changes, then this policy changes.
Yes.
The the headline on that is whatever the, whatever the state mandates are or the town mandates. So you don't really need to rewrite everything, the policy, because you just have to edit it. We do have a policy for COVID or mask and all that things. It's written into that policy already. So I don't think we would have to write a new policy. You just have to update.
Update it.
And so we we do have a policy.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that of that clarification, Terry, from the policy perspective.
If we vote to make this optional mask, we also have to have constant updates in case we need to pivot back. I think that's 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 critical, uh, you know, again, Scott, Dr. Parkinson, just the conversation with everybody here, I think has been excellent. And obviously, everything we've got, parents, input, you know, just great. I think we need to continue to monitor and progress and possibly pivot if we need to.
Absolutely agree.
And can that be put in the motion? Or should that not be?
Depends on how we we work it. We want to be careful that we don't really box ourselves in.
Yeah.
Right? So it there is some value of just having a motion related specifically to the masking and we can sort of follow up with that when we speak to protocols and procedures. Bill, did you have? Okay, you could go eating, meaning mighty mo.
I think it's just important that your vote tonight, it is a policy in itself, right? It's the specifics around if you want to make anything different in a policy, but whatever you vote tonight goes into effect. When you say it goes into effect.
Regardless of.
Regardless of of a formal policy.
Really helpful. Yeah. Because I was really struggling with. The timeline. Timeline. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it was really not thoughtful for it to be the 28th because logistically, you know, it makes it very hard for us who are trying to do this very thoughtfully and appropriately. Um, but you know, it's it is what it is. It's like our caller said. Um, so Bill, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I I would like to make a motion that the masking requirement in the Falmouth schools be lifted as of April uh 28th.
April, you said. Write down. You'll have a lot of. Okay, you have a lot of angry people here. Okay, so yes, make a motion that mask be lifted as of February 28th. Is there a second? Lisa, our seconds. Um, and roll call vote.
Did you want to have a discussion around it?
Okay, sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so um I was actually going to make a motion that we continue masking in Falmouth Public Schools until March 14th. And what would this gain us? So it would allow us to come back from February break and monitor absences and COVID positive spike that may occur after we return to school and separate that increase from the increase that may happen from unmasking. You should expect that. It would allow for two weeks for the at home testing program participants to monitor for COVID spread. It would allow the policy subcommittee to write and approve a new face covering policy and vote it at our next school committee meeting on March 8th. It will give the principals time to work through details that go along with dropping the specific mitigation strategy and clearly communicate this to parents. It gets us closer to spring and the option of more outdoor time and increased indoor air circulation. And it sets a date in the very near future that students, staff and families can plan for. Because to me, it's obvious from the feedback that we receive that people in this town are very passionate uh in care for the well being of our children. And I think we're very lucky to have that. But I also think we want to do this right. We need to do it right to ensure that the schools stay open and our kids are there and ready to learn. You know, my main goal is to keep kids in school. We need to keep the schools open and giving us just a little bit more time to get all our ducks in a row, I think is a very reasonable compromise. So um I would vote against lifting it on the 28th, but I'd be very happy to just give an extra two week buffer to deal with some of those things on the return from our February break.
Thank you, Andrea. Um, any amendment or is that?
It's just her comment.
I don't know if I could.
So there is a motion on on the table for February 28th and it has a second, so we'd have to work through that first um prior to any other uh motions. And.
We can still continue having that discussion.
We can still continue having that discussion.
Because I really, I I really appreciate Andrea, you had your thoughtfulness on that. But I think after hearing about with Dr. Parkinson, um, that he doesn't see that that would be that significant. Um, I'm I'm not sure that we need that extra time. And I'm afraid that if we had those two weeks where parents have been ready to unmask on the 28th based on what the governor and commissioner have put, that we might we might be dealing with some other issues at school of just. So I I'm just, I'm a little, I'm concerned about how that might impact our school for those couple of weeks. Um, but I really, I really do appreciate the thoughtfulness on that because I I think, I think it's all really true. We want to do this right. Um, I think that we're lucky we're meeting tonight to have this discussion and to have.
I think that we're lucky we're meeting tonight to have this discussion and to have our health experts here and to have all the feedback from parents and staff and students. So, you know, all of this has been very thoughtful. And I am feeling comfortable with the 28th date. Not 100% comfortable. Right. But I'm feeling more comfortable after going through this process. Thank you, Bill.
And I would like to comment on that as well, even though I tried to extend it to April 28th. I just got on a roll. But when this first came out, I thought the timing was horrible as well. Like, and especially since February vacation, it's pretty consistent across the state. It's not just a Falmouth thing. And my initial thought was, well, what if we just waited one more week? And give people a chance to get back from vacation and just one more week. I made sure I looked at the numbers, and I was even continually doing that tonight as well. Where, where the spikes were in February, where it coincided, and where, if, where any of their spikes were in April, you know, in conjunction with our breaks. And, and they, they weren't there. It was very small. And I think it was Scott pointed out earlier that really the spike in the spring last year was, was in March. And those things and listening to Scott, Dr. Parkinson today and looking at those numbers convinced me that maybe that week isn't necessary. And that's why I can comfortably make that motion tonight to lift it on February 28th. I have taken that into consideration. And I think we probably all have. And, and I just didn't see the numbers or didn't hear anything tonight that really convinced me that waiting in that extra week was, was going to make a major difference. Because I also heard the parent comments. There were, there were some that were asking for that as well. And that's why I wanted to be diligent about that and look into that. I think February 28th is, along with Desi, is the way to go.
Andrea?
I just wanted to add just sort of one more point to this as a concern from the way the community can look at this, you know, like, when, when the, you know, I think all of our science teachers would agree that when you have a lot of variables together, it can look one way. And by not separating those out, everything that we see as an increase in cases after that could be attributed to our unmasking. And that could look one way, and we won't be able to know the difference. And that was one of the reasons for doing that, so that we could have some confidence that those two things that happen at the same time, and we have zero idea what caused it. And that can cause some panic.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for discussion? Melissa?
I have a few comments jotted down. I've always said that I'm here for the parents who can't be, that want to be. And I would be remiss if I didn't talk about, I did some data analyzing today courtesy of a data analyst I happen to know. And based on the emails that we have, we have, we had 127 emails, actually 128 since we've been sitting here. 69 of them to be optional and 39 of them to be removed, 20 of them to be kept. That does not include the petition that came out for 414 parents that also asked for either optional or removal. I appreciate the people that want to be here. I appreciate the parents who have emailed us, who have reached out to us on both sides. I think that we've had a lot of excellent, well-thought-out emails from parents, from teachers, from students, from grandparents, and from community members. I don't think allowing the kids to take the masks off is a magic pill. I don't think it will make everything normal, but I think it's an opportunity to start the process. I trust Dr. Parkinson, not just with my own children, but I made a very conscious decision when it was presented to the school committee a few years ago to have Dr. Parkinson be the district physician. I trust him then. I trust him now. Trusted him for the last 13 and a half years on a personal level. I trust him when he says that the, if we were to wait a week, the numbers aren't really going to make a difference, because the numbers overall are going down. And even if we had a few over the next, you know, days after vacation, they would still be going down. There were a lot of really great emails that were sent, and I had originally thought that I would sort of highlight some of them, but I think that I don't really want to do that. I think that it's up to us, the administration, to set the tone as far as teachers supporting students. If today they want to wear a mask and tomorrow they don't want to wear a mask, and at first period they want to have it on, and by third period they don't want to do it anymore. I think that we are the adults. We represent, we, the committee, represent our community as a whole. And it's up to us to quell the noise and set the tone.
Any other comments? Seeing that we have a motion and a second, and we'll bring this to a roll call vote. Bill Ryder.
Yes.
Terry Maduris. Lisa Hart, yes. Melissa Keefe, yes.
Dorothy, yes.
And Natalie Cantolopoulos, also a yes. So effective February 28th. We have lifted the mask mandate for K through 12 students. Pre- yeah, K through 12 for Desi's. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I mean, I ask.
Yes.
I know it isn't on the agenda. We usually ask for follow-ups. I would like to follow up, and I think a Falmouth High School student named Katie Shanahan who put in a request about bringing back the lunch tables. We also heard this request on the communication committee that students wanted to bring back the lunch tables. And the reason I want to signal her request out is that she gave us data. She investigated schools in the area, their population, how long they've been having the tables. So I think we have to honor her request to look into it and see if we could also bring back the tables.
I would like to second that. I thought that her email was fantastic. It was. I know that my kids would love it. I think if we're taking these masks off, let these kids have lunch with their friends, and let's get back to normal.
I also want to say to that that I also have that on my email list, and I'm glad that you mentioned that, Terry. I also wanted to, if we're done talking about the tables thing, I just wanted to mention that tomorrow night, one Falmouth has their telethon supporting the 12 Falmouth nonprofits from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on FCTV. So if you want to support a Falmouth nonprofit, I'm giving them a shameless plug. Tomorrow night, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on FCTV. It's going to be super great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Do we make one? Yes, yes. There is a second. Lisa, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, could imagine why. Okay, thank you, everyone. Have a great night. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much.